Hello, welcome to our Tuesday evening workshop and we're going to kick things off with the Department Head of Assessing, Bill Healy. Please, yeah, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My discussion tonight's going to be on the bids we received, the revaluation, and a funding gap that we have to complete the project. In November, we put out an RFP for bids for the revaluation. We only had two bidders, Tyler Technologies and Vision Government Solutions. Tyler's original bid was 532,800, Vision's was 899,000. However, Tyler's bid did not include personal property, and Vision allocated $90,000 towards personal property. We discovered a typo in the RFP that understated our vacant land parcels by 1,000. It came through as 125, it should have been 1250. When I reached back out to the vendors, Tyler increased their bid to 574,000, and Vision said it's vacant land, we're not going to change our bid. I know that there's some revaluations going on at Cumberland County level, and I reached out to the assessor and he informed me that they're paying between $65 and $70 a parcel for full valuation inspection. I know that Tyler Technologies has experienced staff. My concern is they don't have the same experience as Vision in the state of Maine. Right now Tyler has two clients in the state. They had three within a five-year period, but Bath changed to Vision. So right now the only two clients that Tyler has are Lewiston and Portland. Vision has 53 clients in the state of Maine. I looked at the proposals, studied them pretty closely, and found that Tyler's public relations program was very generic. They said, "Look at videos to see what we're going to do." And Tyler, excuse me, Vision actually laid out their plan well-defined exactly how they were going to proceed. I've worked with both companies. I've had difficulty with Tyler's customer service. Vision has been much more responsive in the past. I haven't had them, obviously, since I've been here, but when I was in Scarborough and Cumberland, we had Vision, and I had real good luck with their service. I guess the big thing that you guys need to decide is how we'd like to move forward. We have $266,000 dedicated for the reval. I put another 128,500 in the FY24 LCIP. That means if we, of course, your decision, Finance Committee decision, if we go with Tyler or Vision, we would need between 270,000 and $500,000 to move forward with the project. I guess my concern at this point is we just don't have the funds to have the Finance Committee make a decision. So I guess that's where I'm looking to you to happy to answer any questions. Obviously, you're not going to make a decision about funding tonight, but that's really the main purpose of me being here, is to inform you that we have a gap that needs to be filled.
Anything else?
Nope.
Okay, well, we're going to, I guess, take some questions. Counselor Loschappel.
Thank you. Where are these two companies based? I know Tyler's based here in Maine. Is the other one based in Maine?
Actually, they're in Massachusetts, Northboro, Mass.
Northboro, Mass.
Yeah. And Tyler, their revaluation team is not in Maine, but they're in New England. So I think they're based out of Connecticut.
Tyler Technologies?
Tyler Technologies. They're home-based, they're Maine.
It's a Maine-based company.
It is, but they, their revaluation team, I think, is based out of Connecticut. So there's different divisions, but I know you're right. Tyler is based in Maine, in Yarmouth.
And I know, just, and I guess, two other questions I have. Timeline. Who can get the job done quicker and timelines?
They both informed me that they could complete the project for FY26, which would be as of April 1st, 2025.
2025.
Yeah. We had originally put the RFP out requesting that they complete it by 2024, and no one bid on it. So we had to get, let them dictate the terms of the timeline.
Have you spoken to Portland in regards to Tyler Technologies?
I have spoken with Portland. They were happy, they were pleased with the project that Tyler did there.
Yes, I understand Tyler works with municipalities across the country.
They do. They're a very large company.
Very, they're a huge company. And I'm always one to try to keep my money at home as much as possible.
I understand. I, my, like I said, my personal preference is Vision, but obviously, the decision of which vendor we go with is yours, and I respect that.
Okay, thank you.
Do you know what assistance Tyler provided the city of Portland in terms of information rollout for residents?
I believe that the assessor in Portland did most of the public relations himself. I know they had some town hall meetings and various events where he went and talked to the public.
Thank you. Counselor Scott.
Thank you. That was sort of the line of questioning I was going to go with as well. So can you elaborate a little bit more on the difference between when you saw how they would handle public relations? What, can you give us a little bit more elaboration on that?
So in the RFP, in their proposal, Vision laid out clearly what they were going to do. Spelled out, I can't recall the details, it was quite a couple pages worth. And Tyler just pointed to links for a website that we could look at what their program is. I just thought that Vision put a little bit more effort into their RFP. And we did have a third party look at off-site, just to get a, you know, independent view of which proposal they thought was best. And they came back and thought it was Vision. It's just more detailed as far as the RFP itself. Now, it's possible that Tyler just, you know, have their usual packet that they send out. It just, Vision seemed to put the time into the, an effort into the RFP.
And if I might, just one more question, please. Is, for Portland, was that a full revaluation of the community like we need to have here? Was it the same sort of, or was it?
They did a modified, what they did was, they used, which we also have, Eagleview. So they inspected the properties using technology and didn't actually do door-to-door review.
Okay. Is there any way that we can look at what their process would be as far as public relations? Because I think that's going to be a key piece in this. I think that when the community starts, we start having this valuation, we're going to need a lot of the public to understand exactly how it's proceeding forward and what's happening. I don't disagree. I prefer to save money. I'd like to go with the Maine company as well, but I think that's a key piece, and if we can just look at that, I would like to look at that. Thank you.
Counselor Herman.
Thank you. So it says Tyler's bid does not include the personal property?
Correct.
And I assume that we need to do, we need to revalue personal property?
Yes.
Does that mean that they can do it? It would just be an additional cost?
They actually recommended a company that I know of very well, Tax Management Associates. I have not, they haven't done work for me, but I know the owner very well, and would be happy to reach out and discuss the project with him.
And do you have any idea how much that would cost for the personal property?
I would make sure that it was no more than 90, if that's what Vision put forward. Because if this tax management, who Tyler recommended, by the way, if they can't do it for 90, then I would go towards the one that Vision recommended.
Okay. All right, thank you.
My only concern is if we choose a company based solely on, not solely, but in large part on, you know, the public relations component, I'd be interested in hearing what Portland's experience was, because I'm fairly certain that no matter what each company will do, the large bulk of the public relations management and talking with residents will fall on, you know, fall on the city, regardless of how great their content is. Like, you know, we're, the city staff will be frontline answering all of these questions. Like, they'll want to hear from the city.
I agree.
So I'm not, like, our communications director will likely be very busy, as will we all, you know, fielding calls and responding to emails. So I, given that, I wonder how valuable, like, their public relations piece actually is if we're going to be stuck doing most of the work.
I would be happy to reach back out to them. They've actually been pretty good about contacting me. They've called a few different times, asking whether we are in the process. And I can just say, and I can tell them personally, I'm concerned that you didn't put a lot into your public relations program. Can you elaborate and give me more detail? I'd be happy to do that.
Well, and I'd also be interested in hearing what Portland did, and how much work was required of them, you know, and how much interaction they had with residents, et cetera. Counselor McCarthy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My biggest concern will be accuracy of the reevaluation. I think that is utmost important, that the property is evaluated properly so that our constituents will feel comfortable that the city is being upfront and honest, and that the numbers that are given are correct. So I don't know how we judge which company would be more accurate. I mean, it's, I'm a big one on saving money, too, and, you know, $200,000 or $300,000 savings is considerable. I mean, it's almost 50% of the cost, more for Vision than it is for the other company, but it's really predicated on the accuracy of their evaluation. Thank you.
Counselor Pease.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, it's $367,000 more to start with. We can buy a lot of public relations for $367,000. My thing is, is like Counselor McCarthy said, is the accuracy. Are they using a nationwide statistics to say, "Well, that property should be valued at this?" Or are they actually going by the value of the property? You know, it's one thing to say, it's like insurance. They say, average, what you should pay to have something repaired on an insurance basis is one thing, but what you're going to pay if you're using a national is two and a half, three times that. I just want to make sure they're all in line.
Sure. They're going to use our sales data. They'll focus on the sales that we want them to use. And I would certainly want them to look at a number of years instead of last year. The market really increased, as a lot of you already know. I would be wanting them to probably even look into sales this, you know, hopefully they're going to be able to include some sales from 2023. We're seeing less volume, but no reduction in sale price that I've seen yet, even though the interest rates have tweaked up.
Yeah, well, I'm just worried, you say you want them to use a couple of years. Do they understand that you're going to want a couple of years, or is there going to be an added on at the end?
I can have that discussion with them when we get to the contract point. Obviously, at the end of the day, they give me the information and I have to sign off on it. So if I'm not satisfied with numbers, then we're going to have to go back and look at them again.
Thank you.
Counselor Scott.
Thank you. So this is in our LCIP. If we were to go to the company that is a larger amount, are we going to up the amount in our LCIP for the upcoming years, or how are we looking to mitigate that price difference?
At this point, there's a couple different ways we can approach it. He can put it in his operating budget that would get turned around and pulled out and put in as a fund balance recommendation, because that's what's going to happen with the LCIP. That's going to be earmarked for fund balance as well. The other thing is, I don't know how the RFP was structured for the payment, but we were scheduled to pay it over a period of time, which would allow us to spread out that payment as well. So that would enable us not to have to add additional funding to it at this point in time.
Okay. And is there any way that we can up it to get it moving? Because we started this in, what, 2021 in the LCIP? Was it 21 or 20? I tried to go back. I didn't have 20, I still had 21.
I think it was first in FY21.
Yeah.
Okay. And that was at 115 for, up till 24, right? And then this newest one, we have at 128 till 26.
Our biggest issue is their timeline on when they can complete it.
Okay.
It's not our timeline that is dictating it anymore.
Okay. We need to repeat that again, because a lot of community members want this done as soon as possible, and we need to...
So, you know, Bill, if you want to repeat your opening about when we were targeting versus when they're able to?
Yeah. We were actually hoping to have the project completed for FY25.
Right.
So April 1st, 2024, and no one bid on the job.
Yeah.
So we said, "Okay, what would your timeline be?" And both vendors came back and said they could complete it by April 1st, 2025 for FY26.
Counselor Herman.
Thank you. This kind of goes back to the public relations piece. I think when Portland did theirs, residents could request, like, a personal review of their new valuation. Did either or both vendors mention how they would handle that?
So what happens is, once the project's near completion, you send out valuation notices, and every taxpayer has the opportunity to have an informal hearing before the commitment is done.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Further discussion? Counselor Pease.
Thank you. You said they have a chance to review it. Was that at their property or here at City Hall?
We can, what we'll do is, we mail a notice out with a new valuation, and if they're dissatisfied with it and want us to come inspect it, we will. If they want to just meet and discuss, you know, how did we come up with that new value, we do that in here at City Hall.
I just want them to be able to have the option. Thank you.
Do you have everything you need from us?
I do.
Okay. And Mr. Hunter, are we good?
Yep, thanks.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much, Mr. Healy.
Thank you, sir.
Moving forward, we'll have a presentation from Lewiston Armored Railroad Company regarding the Rail Trail Project. And if you both could introduce yourselves and then kick it off.
Sure. I'm Lincoln Jeffers, Development Director for the city.
And Jonathan Levante, I serve as President of the Board for the Lewiston and Auburn Railroad Company.
And this could be, as Jonathan and I have talked, this could be a very long conversation, but we don't really have time for that tonight. So tonight was really to give you sort of a summary of where the railroad's been and kind of where we're heading. It was mentioned that the railroad was founded in 1872. The mills in Lewiston wanted better access to rail, and the access they needed to get to was through Auburn. The capital cost back then was $300,000. I'm not sure you can buy a siding for that or a road crossing for that these days, but 75% of the cost of the capital improvement was paid by Lewiston. The remainder was paid by Auburn. The ownership of the, there's only two owners of the railroad corporation. That's the city of Lewiston and Auburn. There are nine boards of, nine directors on the board. Six of them are from Lewiston, three of them are from Auburn. Paul Robinson is in the audience. He is one of the Lewiston directors. The other ones are Bruce Damon, Kristen Cludier, Manique Roy, Jack Clifford, and Jeff Goslin. Many of those members have been on the Board of Directors for quite some time. Two of them will be turning over come April, and the two who are scheduled for, to be replaced, or Jeff Goslin's term is expiring, as is Kristen Cludier's. The board really, you know, has just sort of held steady over the years. I've been on the board for quite some time. I'm ex officio, so I'm on it, but I don't get to vote. But it was always in the background, always doing work. Smart Pain Park was a result of the work of that organization. Working with, which of the railroads?
Canadian National.
Canadian National had owned it. It had been a rail yard, truly a rail yard for many, many years, and as utilization of it diminished, it was just sort of a blight in the heart of the downtown. And Dick Trafton and Lucian Goslin got on a plane, flew up to Canada, talked, negotiated the conveyance of that property to the city of Lewiston. It's now one of our celebrated parks. It's been a good synergistic relationship over the years. The boards have historically pretty much had unanimous decisions whether the investment was being made in Auburn to expand rail capacity, freight rail capacity, or in Lewiston. There was a great movement to reestablish rail in the downtown. I'm trying to remember what the member, it was the DOT Commissioner under Governor King.
John Melrose.
John Melrose had said, "We really need to get some more competition for Pan Am." $2 million was given to Lewiston Auburn Growth Council, and they acquired real estate to reestablish right of way where the station grill is now. You would have come across, gone up Lincoln Street, sort of kissed the side of the, what's the Chestnut Street Garage, crossed that surface parking lot, and then reconnected with a rail line that's known as the Lewiston Lower that runs down to Lisbon. That line has not run for many, many, many years, although it is in the memory, perhaps for some of you. I know somebody who'd been briefly on a committee, looking at reestablishing rail, had said his father, his grandfather, and he had all ridden rails into the heart of the Continental Mill and that type activity. So that $2 million was used to reacquire rail, which sort of reestablished it right of way where rail could be reestablished. That reinvigorated the committee. There's been quite a bit of activity. There's a whole variety of initiatives, passenger rail, rail to trail conversions, and reestablishment or reinvigorating freight rail in the area. More of where Jonathan has been investing a lot of his time. He's among the more knowledgeable, probably, I won't say among the more, he is the most knowledgeable of the Lewiston Auburn Railroad Company Board of Directors. It's been a passion of his for a lot of years. He's been paying attention to it for most of the years, through most of the studies. With that, that's really as background. I'll turn it over to you at this point, Jonathan, with kind of where we're focusing.
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be brief, and then we can field questions or interest that the Lewiston Council may have as a majority owner. The memo that I provided to supplement Lincoln's should give you most of the context, certainly for the public, of sort of the current state of affairs for the Lewiston and Auburn Railroad Company. We were sort of joking out back with Paul. You know, a lot of folks don't know the Lewiston and Auburn Railroad Company. It's one of the few, if the only, joint ventures between the two cities that has been able to be predominantly self-sustaining. So you don't see the Lewiston and Auburn Railroad Company during budget season, because there aren't asks. Even in the era of the $2 million bond issue for land acquisition, the railroad company leveraged other DOT funds and uses existing resources as collateral and leverage to finance other parts of the acquisition. The land that's owned along Lincoln Street, the $2 million wasn't sufficient to buy all that we currently own. The railroad company financed other elements, and has been involved in other acquisitions. The stormwater containment facility behind the Hampton Inn where their parking lot sits, that was land controlled by the railroad company that was transferred, its rights were transferred to the city of Lewiston as part of that project. Our core business, we're really, while we're called a railroad company, we're a real estate management company. In essence, in Lewiston, we own the station, where the location where the station grill is, the historic Grand Trunk Depot. We own parking lots along Lincoln Street that were leased to the city of Lewiston. The last of the extensions on those expires at the end of this year, so that will get renegotiated and extended. It helps to support the Bates Mill redevelopment, so there's a lease agreement there. We own some vacant land, some behind Lewiston House of Pizza. The larger parcel is what they call it the LaBelle property across from Hope Haven and LaBelle Sheet Metal. There's a couple-acre parcel there, sort of L-shaped, running behind Flower Foods, LePage Bakeries. And those are just vacant lots, sort of land banking, if you will. You know, the board recognizes the role of LARQ as a land bank as your riverfront island projects move forward. In Auburn, we have the freight rail line and cash flow there. You know, that, those properties are leased, as I mentioned, through 2043, and then another 50-year extension to the St. Lawrence and Atlantic Short Line Railroad owned by Genesee in Wyoming. The board has recognizing conversations that, you know, we can be a real estate management company and sort of hold that course, or we can try to leverage some of our positive cash flow and the relationships and interests to look at other rail-based economic development initiatives, which are noted. Supporting freight rail development and reestablishment, the Auburn Intermodal Facility at one point was the largest dry goods port in the state, doing 15,000 containers a year. It was larger than Portland when you back out oil. It's currently inactive, and we're doing some work right now to try to reactivate that as part of this main state rail plan through DOT. Passenger rail remains an interest. I included a bibliography we provided to Governor Mills in a meeting this past summer, of the studies that have been done just over the last quarter century to bring passenger rail services back to this community. And then the Rail Trail Project, which has been talked about since, I think, 1998 was the first time that that project was imagined. The National Park Service was here, working with the Andrus Goggin Land Trust in both cities, imagining an Andrus Goggin Greenway that would connect what's now the State Park in Turner, south along the river towards Lisbon, in use of that rail corridor, which remains inactive but not abandoned. So it's still an FRA-recognized rail corridor up to behind Flower Foods. I brought, I brought along, we can leave you with hard copies, or we can get into some conversation about it, since I saw the, this agenda item was labeled as Rail Trail. We did have, we did have LARQ Commission Sabago Technics to do a high-level evaluation of the Lewiston Lower Rail Corridor, which at the time was owned by Pan Am Railways out of Massachusetts. They're now owned by, it's now owned by CSX, who acquired Pan Am's assets on June 1st of 2022. As a private company, LARQ was able to approach Pan Am's corporate folks, who tend to be, tended to be very sensitive about their property and access to the property, or awareness of the condition of their property. And we signed some agreements that would provide for us not making the full evaluation public, because we were doing environmental constraints and conditions evaluations, but that we could get authorization for Sabago Technics to send surveyors and engineers out in the field to do a full evaluation, to give us a sense if we actually secured rights to develop the trail, what might we be facing from a permitting and cost perspective. In addition to, you know, taking up rail, rail line and putting down a trail bed, there are a number of structures. Probably the most visible and significant of those structures is the bridge that carries that rail line over Gully Brook, the end of your canal system. And those, because those structures have not been used in a significant period of time, we can expect that they're going to need, need some structural work to begin with, let alone for the conversion for a pedestrian or active transportation use. So I'll stop there. There's plenty of time to be able to field questions about our core business, rail initiatives. As I mentioned to City Administrator Hunter and Link, if there's things that you want follow-up on, additional materials, I'm happy to work with Link and Heather to put those things together for you. And obviously, you've got capable board members that serve on your behalf, too.
What, thank you both. What negotiations are taking place to, I guess, get freight rail back, or, you know, in terms of passenger rail? What is the board doing to those, to both of those ends?
So the predominant conversation, so that Lewiston Auburn Railroad Company's assets have one freight railroad to connect to, and that's the St. Lawrence and Atlantic Railroad. So they have, they have the lease rights there. There's been a lot of change in Maine over the last year or two, from having short-line regional railroads or Class II railroads connecting St. Lawrence and Atlantic, to having Class I railroads on either side. So Class I is your... So Class I is your top-tier railroad, they can cover the most territory across the country. So CSX's acquisition and watching how they do business development, as well as Canadian Pacific, who bought the old Central Maine and Quebec Railroad, sort of running, sort of across the rooftop down through Jackman, and eventually heading towards Searsport. I think St. Lawrence and Atlantic thinks there will be opportunities there. The opportunity is on the Lark Main Line, there's sort of two elements to that. There's further industrial development in Auburn between West Hardscrabble Road and Hotel Road, down towards Rodman Road. You know, Safe Handling was a major transloader, an industrial user there, the main waste of energy facility is there, the old Pioneer Plastics, Panaland. The rail opportunity before was the intermodal facility. And I think we're trying to explore how we can try to work with the main port authority to do business development. Some of the major users that used to come across Canada and then down into Auburn and then transfer to truck, like LL Bean, there was a major wine business that was coming through that area. A number of those products, as the state ramped up, it's control of the port of Portland. So Portland used to own and have the port there, they then leased it to the state, the state now owns that port, and obviously is driving business development through the port. There's been movement of a lot of that business to Portland. I think we want to try to work with the state as that port grows, and they have a shipping provider, Aim Skip, that, an Icelandic company that serves a number of ports in North America. Could there be opportunities for products as they come in to the U.S. there to find their way on rail up to the intermodal facility? So I think it's fairly fluid, it's more trying to ensure that Lark's assets and that Auburn Intermodal Facility are in the conversation. And the state rail plan specifically calls out state investment to reactivate that intermodal facility. So long-winded, sort of serpentine answer to the question, but with the business development piece, it's really making sure we're ready. So if two private operators, say, you know, St. Lawrence and Atlantic and another operator say they're interested in making an intermodal move, that we've got the equipment in place to support them. Most of the equipment, when it went inactive, it was Canadian National's equipment, and they rolled all that equipment back into Montreal. So if someone showed up today and said, I want to set up an intermodal move from rail to truck, the Auburn Intermodal is not prepared to serve them. So we want to be, we want to get back to shovel-ready.
And about passenger rail?
That's probably a half-day retreat, as Lincoln mentioned. We could spend a lot of time here talking about.
I understand, but I guess a very brief synopsis.
Yeah, so there are two studies, if you will, that are coming to a head right now that relate to that. And I think it will be time again for the community to determine which direction it wants, it wants to go. Lincoln and Jack Clifford served on an advisory committee for the Lewiston Auburn to Portland Economic Evaluation, which was a follow-up to the 1819 travel propensity study. So for those watching at home, there was one study to figure out how many people would ride the train, and then another study to look at the economic impact, if those people rode the train in terms of real estate development, all towards queuing up a federal application. The reality is, if you try to connect two urban areas of about 60,000 people with 22-plus trips a day, and you try to compete nationally, where populations in those other regions are 10, 20 times the size, you're not going to score very high. We could have debate of whether or not that encouraging Lewiston Auburn to go in that direction was in essence a fait accompli, but it's neither here nor there. That study is not going to show that commuter rail is viable, which is why the state's advancing this concept of commuter bus. Which brings back the question of if the goal is to get passenger rail, is it about, let's get passenger rail, what is the most direct route to getting a service started? Not, you know, let's imagine a service and then reverse engineer it. They're doing that in Rockland. If you've seen in the newspaper, the state's putting $3 million into testing a service to Rockland. You could not fill a sheet like I did on Lewiston Auburn to Portland with Brunswick to Rockland rail service. They're just going to do it. So I think the dynamic is, why don't we just do it and see what happens? Obviously, it's easier said than done, there's dynamics of the rail is not owned by the state, except for one corridor, which will be a segue to the next piece, in terms of how you get from Portland to Lewiston Auburn. So the state created a process called the Rail Use Advisory Council Process. It was created in statute, led by trail advocates to find a way to unlock state-owned rail corridors for conversion to trail use. That bill passed as part of an omnibus DOT bill in the previous legislature. And there were petition efforts to create these councils. There was one on the Mountain Division Rail Line, and there was one on the, they call it the Berlin subdivision. So the rail line from Portland to, on the southern end of Auburn, just below Danville Junction. It was a section of rail line bought in 2007 and 2010 by the state, driven in part by AVCOG, Lewiston Auburn, the Growth Council, the railroad company. Now Senator Rotundo was a lead legislator negotiating that, recognizing that the state would have better leverage to bring passenger rail if it controlled the corridor. St. Lawrence Atlantic was happy to take the capital after they had seen Pan Am get a bunch of capital as the Down Easter was extended, being extended to Brunswick. That study group was split on whether to do a trail conversion, or to focus on protecting the rail corridor and putting a trail somewhere along or just off that corridor. And Portland, right now, has staked out a position of rail with trail, wanting to protect the ability to bring transit or other use to that rail corridor. Auburn staked out a similar position, as did the town of Cumberland. It remains to be seen what Commissioner Van Note will do on that. There's a lot more flexibility to think about if you want to have passenger rail service or even a pilot service by using the state-owned corridor. An example, I've talked with some folks about, depending on how long you've been around Lewiston Auburn, there used to be something called the Ski Train, Les Autens, Silver Bullet Train, or the Beer Train, depending on how you rode it.
Time of day.
Yeah, it was pre-Down Easter. And at one point, the Down Easter was envisioned to take a different route than where it currently is in Portland, or how it got north of Portland. And again, that's probably part of the half-day retreat. But that line went from East Deering, it came up to Auburn, it actually used part of an Auburn-Lewiston airport property as a sort of a park-and-ride with a platform, so you could pick it up and, just off Exit 75, and you went to Bethel. That was on the St. Lawrence and Atlantic line. The rail cars were, engineers were St. Lawrence Atlantic employees, they ran it under contract. That could be an interesting sort of approach to look at a pilot service. If the Down Easter, NEPR is not interested in rail to Lewiston Auburn, you know, maybe we explore a partnership with a Genesee in Wyoming to see whether they're, given the rail, freight rail service is down, could you partner with them to leverage some of their engineers and capacity to put passenger cars there? It wouldn't be without precedent, Genesee in Wyoming does run some commuter systems under contract, or passenger rail systems under contract elsewhere in the country. It's all a matter of negotiation. So that's sort of some of the picture that's out there, but the current study, I don't see that study yielding anything. It sort of landed that you're not going to compete. Amy Landry from AVCOG, I think she said in on the last meeting, she has some really good perspective on that as well. I mean, AVCOG's going to be a key partner in looking at any next steps. But I think it's a matter of if Lewiston, I know the chamber was involved with you folks before, thinking about how to get passenger rail, I think it's going to be more a matter of how do you just get a service piloted and see whether or not you can hold on to it once you start it, which is what they're going to do in Rockland.
Thank you for that.
It's a lot.
There's a lot.
Sorry.
There's a lot, you know, and on passenger rail, I mean, it's also, you know, what's the demand? But it's also not an inconsequential capital investment to get the rail up to speed. It's at least 300 million a couple of years ago, as was anticipated. Just on the capital costs, you've got significant operational costs on top of that. It's yet to be determined exactly what the number is, but there's, the state or NEPR looks for a local share to help fund the operational costs. Portland with, the Down Easter has, I can't think of what the funding source is, but it's a congestion mitigation pond of money from the state that does it. So Portland's not needing to fund their share, it's coming from a different source at the state. But I'm not sure that source is large enough to accommodate extension of the rail to Lewiston Auburn as well. So it's a complicated puzzle. Jonathan's been living it, as you can probably tell by his delivery, he's been living this for quite a few years.
Thank you. Further, Councilor Hartman?
Thank you. Thank you both. So as far as a potential passenger train between Lewiston Auburn and Portland, would it have to go down the CSX line rather than the state line because of what the Rail Use Advisory Council advised? Because I think they said, like, interim trail, which would mean taking up the rails, right? Or is there an option to do either way?
I'm not sure there's anything that you could consider interim trail. I think once rail lines come up, they're not coming back. But that's the, the Main Rail Preservation Act wouldn't allow the rail corridor to be abandoned, which is in essence what, sort of what stands in the way of it, you know, not being a rail corridor anymore. You know, it could be debated, and I think that's part of the challenge in, it was a great opportunity for Lewiston Auburn 150 years ago, was we had so many rail options. You know, the Lewiston Lower coming up to the end of Mill Street at Main Street by Mill 5, you had the Main Central Railroad, you had the Grand Trunk Connection, the streetcar, you had ways to move. You know, going to Brunswick, there was one way to go. So as we kind of debated, which way do you get to Lewiston Auburn? Do you go through East Deering, and do you use the Pan Am line? Do you use the St. Lawrence line? Do you split in Yarmouth? Do you use Pan Am to Yarmouth and then get on the St. Lawrence and then go back to Pan Am? And we sort of get lost in the debate of which route to go, and while we're figuring that out, the next expansion somewhere else happens. No one has talked to CSX about a willingness to put passenger cars on their tracks. They're likely going to run, I don't know if it's going to be more frequent trains, but longer trains as they try to assemble and grow their business here. While Amtrak has the means to secure some access, you know, if you put six trips a day from Lewiston Auburn to Portland on their line, as an example, and the state wants to have six trips to Brunswick, that means from Yarmouth to Portland, that's 12 trips on that line. And if they're trying to assemble and move trains through, that becomes all the more complicated, especially if you don't have double track to be able to move the passengers out of the way or otherwise. So I think it was easy to say, well, just put it on the CSX track for the trail advocates. And I'm a huge trail advocate, I mean, I spent a good chunk of my career doing it, and I still advocate for trails in my full-time work and with Lark, with the Lewiston Lower, and even the potential to use part of the state-owned corridor where you can do both. I think you might have more, you'd have more flexibility, what they call temporal separation, where you keep the freight and passengers on separate tracks. It's much safer to do it that way.
And then another question about the, so the Rail Use Advisory Council, is there, how binding is their, is it purely advisory to the commissioner?
Yeah, I mean, there were no weighted votes, so 75 or 80% of the population of the corridor voted for rail with trail, but there were more votes to put a trail down on top of the tracks. But it's really to advise the commissioner, you know, it gives the commissioner a chance, let's hear what the passenger, the trail, the freight advocates have to say, let's hear what the towns have to say. You know, most of the towns between Auburn and Portland, there's no zoning to support any kind of rail-oriented development, be it meaningful density to do transit-oriented development. I mean, you know, three-acre minimum subdivisions is not transit-oriented development. You know, what you folks are doing in the Mill District is. But even from a freight perspective, you know, there's no interest in seeing logistics or distribution facilities, even though that could be a huge opportunity to serve metro Portland. If Yarmouth had a siding and Alows could come in and build a warehouse, they don't want any of that. So it was a challenging conversation when the folks sort of arrived expecting to, just want a trail. So Commissioner Van Note can take it under advisement. I think we have a hope of trying to sit down with him and DOT leadership, just to see where they're going to go next. I think, given the split, I don't expect they'll put a bill in this session on that corridor. But there's a chance, if Lewiston wanted to weigh in on that, I think that would be a valuable thing to be able to do.
You mean as a council, like, weigh in on a position, whether trail or rail with trail?
Yep.
Yeah, we had expressed an interest in being on that advisory committee, but we, since we were not on the line itself, we weren't invited.
Thank you.
Senator LaChabel.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. We've seen passenger rail, and I might go against the grain, has not been self-sufficient anyplace in the country. It's always been subsidized, it doesn't make any money. On the other hand, freight makes money, and it doesn't have to be subsidized as strong. What land does the railroad company own? You said the, in Auburn by the airport. Do they still own a large chunk of land over there? Or what's the?
We have our corridor, so one of the additional projects that was done was the construction of what was called the Rangeli Branch. So along the St. Lawrence Atlantic Main Line, it always comes, it'd be easier to have maps. But I think we sent, I think within the packet.
It was included in the packet.
So we own rail corridors, very narrow strips of the corridor. There's one 12-acre parcel that's landlocked within the intermodal that abuts the city of Auburn's ownership, that was part of, when that rail line existed before but was abandoned, so the right-of-way was sort of reverted, and it wasn't even part of the St. Lawrence and Atlantic, it was part of Pan Am's assets. So we kind of reimagined a rail corridor, bought up farmland, and there's some landlocked pieces.
I liked what you said earlier, and what's the feasibility or reality of actually making that a junction for freights, for storage, or moving freight in and out of the area? If we, is the railroad looking at investing to get this thing up and running so it's ready? What kind of a cost would that incur? And what kind of a turnaround? If we build it, will they come? That's the question.
Yeah, so we are having conversations right now with a firm called HNTB. I think you guys are doing some work with them on some traffic signal projects. They have a, you know, a traffic division, but they have a rail division in Boston. And my conversation's with Nate Moulton, who runs the freight and passenger division at DOT, trying to figure out how do we maximize the use of the intermodal facility on all public land, whether it's airport-owned, railroad-owned, or city of Auburn-owned, to create the maximum flexibility to bring users into the intermodal. There's a current tenant there, Power and Construction Group, who's the major supplier of utility poles, both distribution and transmission for Avon Grid, Central Main Power, as well as Versant. And they have interest in growing that footprint. They only bring in about a quarter of their poles by rail, but it's a perfect lay-down facility. They don't need tall buildings, which would be an issue because of the airport. St. Lawrence Atlantic is interested in getting a lease arrangement back in so they can be getting ready to be shovel-ready. And DOT is open to looking at perhaps some capital grants or matching grants to have some of the core equipment to start intermodal operations. So we're, HNTB, supposed to meet with them beginning of next week. They're putting together a scope of work to look at sort of site layout options and any capital or operational equipment gaps that we might have, so we can get to shovel-ready. There are a number of propane distributors out there, Dead River, Irving, Savage does some work for them, now the owner of Safe Handling, as well as NGL Energy. So I think there may be some opportunities for additional distribution of energy supplies out there as well, that we're going to try to figure out.
So what can we do as a council to assist the Lark in getting this forward? Is there anything we can do? Or I like the idea, I think far better, excuse me, far better than passenger rail would be to have that for commerce instead. I know when I was on the airport board, we started talking to hangars, to have it as a repair center. We're just not going to see large residential, large flying, commercial, passenger flight, thank you, we're not going to see it out of Auburn. But we could see a very large commercial for freight.
I mean, the timing is really good right now. So AVCOG, who the two cities contract with to do our regional transportation planning, is just starting a long-range plan. The airport is about to start its airport master plan. The state's just finished, you know, the state rail plan. To think about how with the air, highway, and freight connections, what are, and the fact that the airport still has significant developable land that could be ground leased to generate non-property tax cash flow to support the operations, are there opportunities within the supply chains to position all the public assets there to support that? Not necessarily for the public to run it, but for the public to make it available. I think in terms of what could the council do right now, I think just being aware, certainly Council McCarthy, as Chair of the Airport, can communicate as those plans come forward. I can certainly communicate through Link, as your staff liaison to Lark, if we identify capital needs that we're going to approach DOT for, the ability to have both cities weighing in. have both cities weighing in as Lark makes those asks, you know, historically that has really helped DOT make some of those competitive or flexible funds available. So our, our goal is to identify some of those near-term capital needs and then decide, you know, how do we go about, go about pursuing those with, with DOT grants. So I think those would be some of the near-term things, and we can just make sure we're, we can communicate, you know, regularly, and maybe quarterly, send a, a M L through Link with an update on, on progress.
Excellent. Thank you.
Further discussion? Anything else?
I, I know we didn't, we did not discuss the, the trail project. I will say that that is something that could be, could be pursued. There's millions of dollars, whether, you know, there's always the debate of, you know, how can you put that amount of money into a trail project when we have other needs? The reality is there are dedicated pools of funds that go towards active transportation, and it's predominantly right now going to York and Cumberland Counties. There's no reason why there couldn't be projects identified in this region. That corridor is not owned by Lark, though CSX has expressed a willingness to enter conversations to figure out what the future of that would be. They don't want to sell anything right now, in part because they're still getting their arms around the state of Pan Am's infrastructure and trying to get the rail corridors up to a level where they can increase speeds and be doing what they need to do to serve their core business. But there could be an opportunity to pursue that corridor if that was still a project that Lewiston was, was interested in. And the railroad company could play a role, you know, funding some of the early-stage steps around that.
Yeah, and this is the Lewiston Lower from here down to Lisbon, and it really has, it's gone in fits and starts over the last few years. I know at one point that the East Coast Greenway was very interested, and Lisbon was very interested in moving it forward. So over time, there's been a fair number of, lots of effort, this study, which I will give to you, so you can at least get a taste of it. The railroad did the sort of the early-stage feasibility analysis, what's it going to take? And I think CSX is a much more receptive partner than Pan Am historically had been. They were a challenging organization to, to work with in CSX. At least early on, seems to be more, at least willing to have conversations and open to other alternative ideas.
Counselor Scott.
Thank you. I would like to see that report if we could and that map too, so that we can get a little more information on that. Thank you.
And I think it would also be helpful for, you know, your department, Link, to, to weigh in about how that could affect the economy here in the city, what that, if it was up and running, what that could do for us.
We have not done a study, but obviously I think it would, yeah, seeing what's happened in Brunswick with their trial and some other spots, but we can certainly look at it much more harder as opposed to just casually.
Counsel, Counsel Arab.
Thanks. And where, where this ties into, you know, it comes into the Mill Street area, it can sort of tie into the Riverfront Island master plan that we're putting some light on right now.
Yeah, it absolutely would. I mean, just, you know, there's trails that are popping up here and there. I mean, Brunswick's got it, but you really have a shortage from Brunswick to Thompson. There's a gap. Lisbon has done a nice job with their trails near the river, they're starting to expand that, but then there's a big gap from Lewiston to Lisbon. We would love to, boy, if we can imagine, get on a trail, ride your bike from Lisbon up to, all the way up to Sunnyside Park and beyond, you know, get on that trail, just work that whole system, so, destination.
I would have stopped at Baxter, but we can go to Sunnyside Park too.
Yeah. It's amazing how hard it is to ride a bike after three bears, I can tell you.
Perhaps another time, Director.
Another time. We digress.
Any other final thoughts?
Certainly if other questions come up, if you're, you have other questions about the railroad, you can talk to Link, or you can pass them through Counsel McCarthy, he and I have been spending a lot of time together too.
Chairman Levante, Director Jeffers, thank you both very much.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
We'll be back to, back for the council meeting as close to seven as possible.
Thank you.
Hello and good evening. Welcome to our city council meeting. We're going to start off with the Pledge of Allegiance and we'll be led by culinary student Gabe Worszarski. I did my best, Gabe. Please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
We're going to start off with a presentation recognizing recent Skills USA competition winners from the Green Ladle Culinary Arts Program. If I can have Gabe join us as well as Chef Share. Come join me up here, please. Gabe, remind me how to pronounce your last name.
Worszarski.
Worszarski. There we go. We have Gabe Worszarski, who is culinary student at Lewiston Regional Technical Center, and Chef Tony Share, who is the new chef at the Green Ladle. So we are recognizing 2023 Skills USA competitors. Whereas the Green Ladle is a vital aspect of Lewiston's hospitality industry, with skills, expertise, and professionalism consistently demonstrated, learned, and developed. And whereas students of the Green Ladle are trained to be standouts in their field, and the ladle's in-house restaurant catering and food truck have made a lasting mark on our community. And whereas annually, local Green Ladle students have an opportunity to participate in Skills USA career competition, which are local, state, and national events showcasing the nation's best career and technical education students. And whereas several Lewiston students who recently participated in the local Skills USA competition will proceed to Bangor in March for the state competition. And whereas students going to state competition are Gabe Worszarski, Culinary Arts Faith Brier Commercial Baking, Kirsten Wing Hannah Conant Indiana Tabor Wedding Cake Design, and Destiny Graham Restaurant Service. Hello, Justine. And whereas these students are commended for their dedication to their craft, also hello, Becca, and preserving with customer service at the core. And whereas the Green Ladle annually graduates students who are ready to shine as integral workforce contributors or to further hone their skills through post-secondary education. And whereas the state Skills USA competition will be another stepping stone towards career success. And we are extremely proud that these students represent the city of Lewiston. Now therefore, I Carl Elshaline, Mayor of the City of Lewiston, do hereby officially recognize Green Ladle students heading to the state Skills USA competition in March and know that they will represent the city of Lewiston, Lewiston Public Schools, and the Lewiston Regional Technical Center in stellar fashion. A round of applause for all of our students. So, so Gabe is here tonight and the rest of the students lead very busy lives with sports and jobs and everything else, but my hat's off to all of them. Another round of applause. And now we're going to move right into Lewiston leads. If I can have Mama Shukri join me here at the front, that would be great. I was just there the other day getting Somali tea. I am proud to recognize Shukri Abashak for Lewiston leads. Most commonly known as Mama Shukri, she has been an invaluable member of our community since she arrived in Lewiston and opened the well-known Mogadishu store in 2006. One of the first immigrant-run stores on Lisbon Street. She paved the way for Lewiston immigrant community and through her store made this a place that other Africans could call home. Mama Shukri has worked day and night to make her small business a reality and those long hours have paid off. When she came here to Lewiston in 2002, Mama Shukri worked as a janitor at Lewiston High School, a picker at LL Bean, and a cashier at the Salvation Army. Then after working tirelessly in those jobs for four years, she saw a gap in community needs and knew that she was the woman to start Lewiston's African market. In 2006, when the Mogadishu store opened, Lisbon Street was full of empty storefronts. Now those shops are bustling with immigrant-run businesses, boosting the local economy and supporting the growing international community. Mama Shukri was and is a trailblazer in Lewiston and the city has benefited greatly from it. It is my honor as mayor to congratulate Shukri Abashak for her leadership and dedication to the immigrant and Lewiston community as a whole. Round of applause. And I am presenting her with this Lewiston challenge coin.
Ready? Three, two, one. One more. Three, two, one. Thank you.
Congratulations, Mama Shukri. Councilor Herman, do you have Lewiston leads?
Yeah. This month, I'm proud to recognize Amy Smith as a Lewiston leader. It's hard to do anything in downtown Lewiston without getting to know Amy. Not only is she a landlord in the tree streets, she's also involved in several community-based neighborhood organizations. Amy is a board member of Healthy Neighborhoods, which organizes community events ranging from trash cleanups to sledding parties and which has also played a key role in helping to implement the Choice Neighborhoods Transformation Plan and Grant. She is also the founder and executive director of Healthy Homeworks, a community organization that aims to help this neighborhood thrive. They started their Build a Bed program after recognizing the number of people sleeping on mattresses on their floors without bed frames and the health issues that can result from this. Participants in the program learn woodworking skills while also building bed frames for themselves and others. Another program, Renter to Owner, is a homeownership class that teaches prospective Lewiston homeowners about the home buying process and also provides them with the skills necessary to repair and maintain their own homes. In addition to all that, Amy is the program director for Lewiston Rowing, a new community rowing organization that introduces people of all ages to the sport and which has hosted the Riverfest Regatta for the past two years. Amy has also served in various civic roles in Lewiston, including as a member of the Ad Hoc Rental Registration Committee, co-chair of the Ad Hoc Shelter Committee, and currently as a member of the Planning Board. Please join me in honoring Amy Smith with this challenge coin in recognition of everything she does for the people of Lewiston.
One more time. Three, two, one. Thank you.
Thank you to our Lewiston leaders. Madam Clerk, I believe we are ready to begin.
All roll call votes for this meeting will begin with the councillor of Ward Six and we will also note for the record that councillor Jalinas is absent this evening but has an excused absence.
And may I have a motion to accept the minutes?
No, we're going to get those to you next time. Sorry about that.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will now have public comment. Any member of the public may make comments regarding issues pertaining to Lewiston city government. This period is reserved for non-agenda items. Public comment is also allowed during individual agenda items. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person. Please state your name for the record and please indicate if you are Lewiston resident. Because this is the business meeting of the city council, all questions should be directed to the mayor, who asks staff to follow up at a future time. It is illegal for the city council to allow comments related to personnel matters. All personnel complaints should be made directly to the city administration office.
Good evening. I was in front of this, Ronnie Parity, Ward Six. I was in front of the city council back in 2019 when we proposed the Motel School to be a senior, to be a senior center for things. And then I read in the paper a couple of weeks ago what has happened. I'm really shocked. I'm really shocked because I found that they just, the city just went out to one developer, did not go back to housing or anything else that was done. We need senior housing. Let me tell you a little bit about seniors. Loneliness is a big problem in our country. How would you like to be shut up in a house and not have visitors or family or anything like that? It has shown with older people and seniors, and I like to call them seasoned saints. That's what my church calls them, seasoned saints. Anybody over 60. They were, when they're lonely, they are more apt to get sick and everything else. Studies have shown this. Read your AARP. Some of you of age should get AARP.
Excuse me, if you could just lower, lower your voice just a little bit.
I'm sorry, yeah. I got a loud voice. I know that. This is what a senior, older person, a seasoned saint said in the ARP paper. "No, I want to enjoy myself. I want to not kill myself trying to get through it." She's talking about aging. "I want to be comfortable with a roof over my head and food on the table, be able to travel, enjoy time with my husband." What are we doing? Why aren't we helping the seniors in this city? The seniors are put back. We need senior housing in the outer city. The seniors do not want to go downtown and everything like that. I'm asking you, please extend the proposal and go out to housing. I've talked to senior housing, I've talked to Lewiston housing, and you wouldn't believe the waiting list that's on there, and some of them are seniors. And there's a lot, please, as a council, and some of you are over 60, I know that, you need to think about what it's like to be on a fixed income. I know a senior that is paying $2,000 in Lewiston for rent and she said to me, "I don't know if I'll have enough money in the future." Is this what we're doing to our seniors who have paid taxes? I have paid taxes in Lewiston except 15 years of my life and I'm 74 years old. I've lived in Lewiston for that many years and have paid taxes and have done my volunteer time, hours and hours, to the city of Lewiston, especially the school system. Thank you. I hope you will extend.
Luke Jensen, Ward Five. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councillors. Mr. Mayor, at the last regular meeting you gave a year in review. I just want to share some very abbreviated thoughts about that. I wasn't quite impressed by the comments on the state of our local economy and combined with the Economic Development Workshop held a couple of months prior to that. I'm a little bit alarmed at the economic direction of our city. And to be clear, I have no issues with city staff. Any comments that I make relate solely to decisions made on that day, particularly, you know, from the mayor's position and the decisions that you guys all make. We tend to focus too much on economic development purely without really considering whether the economic development will hurt or help the city in the long term. We view development only in the short term and seemingly with blinders on. So, like, we talk about why businesses go to Auburn and go elsewhere instead of here. And we'd say things like, "Why can't we get a Whole Foods? Why can't we get a Market Basket? Why can't we get an Olive Garden?" And there are a lot of things that businesses consider, but, you know, one thing that you consider is the median household income. Because if a business is investing millions to open up a store or a location in town, they want to make sure it doesn't go under in a few years. Perfectly reasonable. And during the workshop, there was mention of the median household income, but no real discussion about it. And sure, that's only one factor, but it is a pretty important indicator. And the higher it is, the more likely we are to see productive development in other areas. Have you guys compared that median household income to other cities? Auburn is 15% higher than Lewiston. What I did, excuse me, what I did see during that workshop was a list of economic development projects that included many which, if successful, will actually drive the median income even further down. The city, through lack of political direction, has not maintained the crucial job of balancing market rate housing with non-market rate housing. And we are paying the price. And I don't just mean the last few years, I mean decades. The city has done a lot to study and understand poverty and its impact on communities. We're not currently in a great position financially to address a lot of our poverty-related issues, yet we continue to make the situation worse by not balancing market rate and non-market rate housing. The result is limited tax-based growth, higher education costs, and a greater workload for school staff, more crime that isn't limited to the downtown, more work the first responders and more dangerous situations for them to respond to, increased workloads for public works to keep our city beautiful, and damage, I should say, further damage to our city's reputation. Our school system is already stretched to its limit. Public Works doesn't have the resources it needs to do what it wants to do. Our first responders are already asked to do too much in unsafe conditions and our reputation is not a positive one. It should be abundantly clear that the city needs new political direction and given the makeup of our city charter, that direction needs to come from the chairperson of the council, the mayor, or it will never come. So going forward in this last year of you guys' term, I really hope to see change than what we've seen in the last, not just year, but direction in the city as a whole. It was frustrating being on the council, I get it. I just hope that you guys can work together and come up with a different strategy. Yourself leading the charge, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Further public comment? Public comment is now closed. Madam Clerk, I understand we have consent agenda?
We do. There are three items on the consent agenda this evening. Item number one, order authorizing the Public Works Department to prohibit vehicles with a gross vehicle weight greater than 23,000 pounds from certain roads for the period from February 13th to May 1st, 2023. Item number two, adoption of city council meetings scheduled for the months of July and August. And item number three, resolve accepting the city's annual comprehensive financial report and the independent auditor's report for June 30th, 2022.
Councillor Clement?
I move a consent agenda for passage.
We have a first, second by councillor Herman. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Councillor from Ward Six?
Yes.
Ward One?
Yes.
Ward Two?
Yes.
Ward Three?
Yes.
Ward Four?
Yes.
Ward Five?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Agenda item number four.
Item number four, public hearing on the city's fiscal year 2024 Lewiston Capital Improvement Program. Requested action to conduct a public hearing on the city's fiscal year 2024 Lewiston Capital Improvement Program and to receive public comments.
The public hearing is now open. If you wish to comment, please make your way to the podium. And seeing, I was saying that nobody wishes to comment on the capital improvement plan, public hearing is now closed. Agenda item number five.
Item number five, amendments to the city's purchasing policy regarding limits for formal competitive bids, price quotes, and purchase orders. Requested action to approve the amendments to the city's purchasing policy as recommended by the city's finance director and finance committee.
So moved.
Councillor McCarthy, seconded by councillor La Chapelle. Discussion? Councillor, please.
Yes, I have a couple of questions. I guess it's just titles, but I've got 3.4.1. Purchasing policy, is that 42,000 and they subtract the 2,000?
Councillor, it's the strikeout, I think. So it's, the current purchasing policy is 2,000 to 10,000 and it's going from 2,000 to 25,000. Oh, up there. That's a strikeout as well. From 1,000 to 2,000. So I agree the strikeouts are making them look like fours and a few other numbers.
So that's actually 2,000 now?
Correct.
Councillor Scott?
Thank you. So first off, I appreciate the amount of work that went into this and to relook at this policy and bring it up to date. I had a couple of questions, though. So I've heard from a couple of businesses and spoken to a couple of businesses and have in the past as well. I've been involved with RFPs and doing different bids for the school department for many years. And I had heard that, you know, sometimes when we're looking at putting out an RFP out or getting an estimate for a job, we sometimes ask local businesses for some guidance and a rough estimate before we put that out, but that local business may not get the bid. I'm asking this and wanting to bring it up, not knowing if it can be put somewheres in here because I did look at, you know, the section under preferential treatment about, you know, local vendors should only be granted preferential treatment when all bids received are for the same total amount or on a unit cost basis reflect the same pricing with quality and service being equal. My bringing this up is to hopefully help promote local businesses. So if we are asking a local business, is there any possibility that we can look at that? And I don't know the legalities of this, that's why I'm asking, that they, if their, if their bid is 5% above the lowest bid, could we not possibly give that bid to a local company? So that we're now not only supporting a local company, we're giving them the work. They're helping us build something in our community and we're giving that work to the local company. And I'm just wondering if there's a possibility of doing that and that we look closer at using, we have some pretty phenomenal companies in our city when it comes to HVAC, to plumbing, to roofing, to masonry, to flooring. I would like to see if there's a chance that we can, or an opportunity for us to use more of those and if that's, if that's a feasibility in that.
Would you, yeah.
Just responding, just, sorry, just responding to councillor's question. We do look at all local vendors. We look at the bids when they come in. We don't always go with the lowest bid. Those are brought to the finance committee and we do look for local vendors.
I think I would add, councillor, that, that is something that we, if, if the council wants to entertain as an amendment to this policy, that would be the council's purview. The other way, to the finance director's point, the other scoring mechanism, most of the larger RFPs that require a committee to score them have various rubrics related to that. You know, that is something that we can definitely make sure is included in all the rubrics as well, that they, you know, there is an element of local, local business and that gets awarded points that other out-of-town businesses would not be able to get. So those would be the two alternatives that we could offer tonight.
Thank you. So I would like to see something like that happen. I think that, you know, where, when we talk about economic development and we talk about, we should be talking about the businesses that are already here and how can we help them when we're looking at building and doing construction or any projects moving forward. I would like to see something like that put in there as part of a rubrics and to ensure that, you know, if we're asking a company to help us put together a bid process and they put any time in towards that, they sort of, sort of kind of should get a little bit of preference, in my opinion, into getting the bid. Just saying. So I would like, should I make a motion or would that be the way to move that forward?
If you're, there's two ways we can do this. We can table this tonight and we can bring back wording to you. Or if you want to try to draft wording, I would recommend that, this comes recommended by the finance committee to bring back, present before you that we can bring the wording to finance committee and we could table this action tonight and incorporate all the changes.
I think I would prefer to do that because I don't know that I could word that correctly tonight to put wording in myself. And I would prefer that we were able to look at that, so.
And would also, sorry if I may.
I'd like the finance committee to have that.
Just going to agree with that, yes.
So I make a motion to table this, Mr. Mayor?
We've, so we have a motion to table and then councillor Clement has, has seconded that.
That's to go back to finance to add this, whatever language. I think we're all in agreement to that.
Councillor Clement, did you want to?
If I might, to the councillor from Ward One's point, the finance committee considers a number of different things. We have staff recommendations. It is not always the low bid that receives the nod. Local businesses do receive consideration at the finance committee level. There's a whole host of things. It's not anything cut and dried. But in the end, it is what is in the best interest of the city as a whole that we award the bid. I mean, there's some, sometimes there are tremendous differences. You might have a local company in there, 115,000, and the bid might go out to, to a company with over $200,000 that's located out of state. But they have the workforce, they have the wherewithal to perform the service that is requested in the time requested. I mean, there's a whole host of different things. So it's not just low bid, local, this one, that one, A, B, C. You know, there's a whole host of different things. We're presented with a bunch of challenges every meeting and when it comes to, to awarding of bids. And the committee does not always agree with staff, the staff recommendations on things. I think councillor McCarthy, who's a member of that committee, can, can back me on that, so. So I would hate to see us hemmed in, but if that's the wish of the council, if we can come up with something that still affords us latitude, I'd go along with it. But if it, if it hems us in too tightly, then I can't, I can't agree with it. Thank you.
And if I might?
Yes, please proceed, Counselor Scott.
I completely understand that. And, and no, in no way am I trying to ham us in. I've done RFQs in the process myself with the school department. I'm currently working on two different bids right now with the school department for the Facilities Committee. So I understand all of those different scenarios that you were representing. I just want to see if we can put something in there that does look a little bit closer at using our local companies, if that's at all possible. So thank you, I appreciate that.
Well, and, thank you, Counselor Scott. And to Counselor Clement's point, perhaps the discussion should be, do we need this language since we're already considering it? You know, perhaps that, that's where the conversation should perhaps start at the Finance Committee.
Point taken, and I'm sure Counselor McCarthy and I will take that back to the committee, and we'll have a discussion at our next meeting.
When is your next meeting?
See, two weeks from last night.
Oh, okay. Oh, you guys just met, right?
27.
It's Monday evening, I have to get the date written.
Okay. Counselor McCarthy?
Yeah, I may just add that most of the contracts that come across that table, there's no, they're not close. I mean, it can be 100, 200, 300,000 dollars difference between the different companies. One of the big factors that we have to, we have to take into account is whether the company can perform the duties in a timely fashion. And that's, we've had some issues with some let abatement companies, some new companies coming in, not being able to fulfill their contract or, and stuff like that. So it's, it is important that if we do anything, that we don't tie the hands of the Finance Committee as making it a requirement. Because I know, being on the Finance Committee for over a year, we always look at the bids as a whole, as far as who's bidding, what their track record is. That's a big thing with the city is their track record. We'll, we'll ask the department head who is proposing the bid, their track record with that company. And we, and that is, you know, that's another important aspect. So it's important not to tie our hands too tightly because it, in the end, it wouldn't be, serve the city well. Thank you.
At this point, I think we, unless there's further, have we been to public comment for this table?
We have not, right. The motion is to table the matter.
To table, right, yes. Okay, thank, thank you. So at this point, unless there's further discussion from the council, we will have a motion to table this and refer it to the Finance Committee. Counselor Pease.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if it's possible, is there any way we can have a meeting with the Finance Company, Committee prior to this and changing their languages? Because there's a few things in here that I'm not comfortable with, and maybe I don't understand it, but if we could meet with them, if possible.
You are welcome to, we can do one of two things. We can either have a joint meeting with the Finance Committee, or you're most welcome to go to the Finance Committee meeting and ask questions and, and express your concerns at that point regarding the policy.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Sure. Counselor from Ward 6? Word 1?
Yes.
Word 2?
Yes.
Word 3?
Yes.
Word 4?
Yes.
Word 5?
Yes.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of 7 to 0.
Agenda item number?
6.
6, thank you.
Item number 6, public hearing and approval of order authorizing the reallocation of $350,000 in home ARP funds for housing development to supportive services and to award home ARP funding to area agencies. Requested action to approve the order authorizing the reallocation of $350,000 in home ARP funds from housing development to supportive services and to award home ARP funding to area agencies.
May I have a motion, please? Counselor Herrmann, seconded by Counselor Pease. Director Jeffers, is there anything you'd like to start us off with?
I think Kathy's sort of summary there really nails it. We've had quite a bit of discussion over this since this past summer, based on our last public hearing on this. Counsel really said, since we did not get applications for developing new affordable housing with this, that we should take that 350,000, give it to supportive services, and it allows us to fully fund the three agencies that we have determined are already qualified for, for funding, including New Beginnings, which had a three-year program. And then the, there would be about 187,000 dollars that would be set aside specifically for store next door if and when they become eligible for funding. I will be meeting with Ron Potvin and Jamie Colette tomorrow afternoon along with Jessica, so I know she's had several conversations with them, but trying to figure out exactly how to get them to a point where they would be eligible for funding. But that, in a nutshell, that's the request. We did have this posted for public notice. We did not get any comments on it, so it's, it's really in the council's purview at this point as to how you'd like to proceed.
Thank you. Discussion? Public comment? Back to the council. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward 6?
Yes.
Word 1?
Yes.
Word 2?
Yes.
Word 3?
Yes.
Word 4?
Yes.
Word 5?
Yes.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of 7 to 0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item number 7.
Item number 7, resolve accepting and appropriating $422,400 from the Heads Up Pedestrian Safety Project funding from the Main Department of Transportation. Requested action to approve the resolve accepting and appropriated, appropriating $422,400 from the Heads Up Pedestrian Safety Project funding from the Main Department of Transportation.
May I have a motion, please? Counselor Pease?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Herrmann. Discussion, or, sorry, before discussion, Director Brunchek, please kick us off.
Sure. This is the third grant that we've gotten from the main Heads Up program. So we have three intersections that we'll be improving on this one. And one is Easton Russell. Second intersection on Lisbon Street is right at St. Croix and Martin and Scribner. And then the third intersection is at Lisbon and South. So again, great, great program. This is the third time that we've gotten close to half a million dollars, so we're excited to get them done.
Thank you. Discussion? Counselor Scott?
Thank you. I'm just happy to see that we continue to move forward with this pedestrian safety. This is something that has been talked about for many years, and we've been working on this for quite a while, and I'm happy to see this going forward. One question, and I know this is not particularly here, but it made me think of this when we had, when I, when I was reading through this. Do we have any timeline on the crosswalk for the Looking Ahead Club on Main Street? Because I know that's been a conversation, and I keep getting questions about it, and I wasn't sure.
It's, it's still a year away from construction.
Okay.
But we got additional funding from the state on that. Because of the long distance, we're doing a few extra measures.
Yep.
You know, across the five lanes.
Perfect, thank you.
Counselor Herrmann?
Thank you. I would echo Counselor Scott's sentiments about these, these grants. I just was curious as to what the timeline might be for these particular changes.
It usually takes about two years. It's a year in the right-of-way process and then the design process. So it, it takes a long time, which it seems like. But the first ones will be under construction shortly, this summer. So because we've gotten three grants, the first grant that we got will start getting built. So it makes everyone feel better when they start seeing something under construction. So every year then there'll be the next three, and then the next three. And again, we've had some great luck of continuing with these every year. So it's very non-competitive, which is great. They've been great support for us to continue that pedestrian program that we've had. And I will be giving you updates on those MDOT projects, as well as the list that's in the LCIP is kind of an outdated list. Some of them are done. We'll be giving you a copy of that to let you know exactly what's done and what's not done.
All right, thanks.
Further discussion? Yes, thank you very much, Director Brunchek. Looking forward to these projects. You know, recently, we had a, a 24-hour period where I think we had three pedestrian accidents. And yeah, this is very important for the safety of our residents. Public comment? Back to the council. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward 6?
Yes.
Word 1?
Yes.
Word 2?
Yes.
Word 3?
Yes.
Word 4?
Yes.
Word 5?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of 7 to 0.
Agenda item number 8.
Item number 8, approve the city council proclamation to reaffirm their commitment to the city, to the city council protocols. Requested action to approve the city council proclamation to reaffirm their commitment to the council protocols. And the mayor has asked me to read the proclamation language?
Please, yes.
Proclamation, "We, as members of the city council, share a love of our great city of Lewiston. We may have differences in views, as do members of any board, but we want to emphasize that we respect each other's views, including giving each member of the council, including the mayor, the opportunity to have a full discussion and equally share our views in a respectful way. Our common goal is to further the interests of the city. In that regard, we reaffirm our commitment to the council protocols, protocols as governing our conduct."
Thank you, Madam Clerk. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Counselor Clement?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Scott. Council discussion? Public comment? Back to the council. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward 6?
Yes.
Word 1?
Yes.
Word 2?
Yes.
Word 3?
Yes.
Word 4?
Yes.
Word 5?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of 7 to 0.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Agenda item number 9.
Item number 9, appointment of city council representative to the Lewiston Seniors Advisory Council. Requested action to receive nominations and make an appointment of the city council representative to the Lewiston Seniors Advisory Council.
Thank you. And I'm now?
So moved.
Wait, are we just opening it for nominations? Or do we need a motion?
Right, yes.
Okay. I'm now opening it up for, for nominations. For the, for the, for the council rep on the senior advisory committee. Counselor Herrmann?
Thank you. I just wanted to, to mention that I feel like this committee is valuable and, you know, I would, I, I would not mind serving on it, but I'm already serving on four other committees, other standing committees. So I feel like it would be great if another counselor who is on fewer committees could possibly take on this role.
Counselor Scott?
Thank you. I would have to agree with that. So I was initially nominated to be on this committee, and honestly, I feel that, like the work I do for the school committee and the work I do for the Lewiston Youth Advisory Council, this committee needs a city council member that is going to be committed to give it the work that it requires and it needs, in my opinion. I would like to see the senior advisory council be just as important, getting a readout of a report each council meeting, just like we do for the Lewiston Youth Advisory Council. I think that's really important, and we need somebody that's committed to do that work. I wish that I had the time to do that, and that's why I told the mayor and our city administrator before Christmas time that this is, this is, requires somebody that's going to be able to put the commitment in, and I couldn't do that, and I felt very bad about that. But I feel that this committee is that important, that we need somebody that can do that work.
Would you like to make a nomination at this time, Counselor Scott?
I'll make the nomination. I'd like to nominate Counselor LaChapelle if he'd, if he'd be willing to serve.
Counselor LaChapelle?
It would be an honor, since I was part of the group to push forward for the advocacy of the seniors, it would be an honor to serve.
Do nominations need a second, Madam Clerk?
They do not, no.
Okay. Further nominations?
Please. I would move nomination cease.
Given where we're at, Madam Clerk, please call the, or, public comment on, on this agenda item. Back to the council. You're, you're still willing to serve, Counselor LaChapelle?
Yes.
In, in that case, Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward 6?
Yes.
Word 1?
Yes.
Word 2?
Yes.
Word 3?
Yes.
Word 4?
Yes.
Word 5?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of 7 to 0.
Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations. We are now up to reports and updates from the council. Counselor Scott?
I do have a couple of reports. The school committee has met twice since the last time we met, so, because of cancellation because of the snowstorm a couple of weeks ago. Anyways, we had discussions about policy adjustments and reaffirming some policies that we already had in place. We did several different field trips. It's very nice to see that we have field trips coming back, especially after COVID. That was put on hold for quite a while, so it's nice to see. We've got our junior ROTC group going to Washington DC in the spring. We've got some fourth graders going to Boston to walk the Liberty, the Freedom Trail. We've got all sorts of different things happening. We've also got a group that is going to be going to, excuse me, I have it right here, I apologize. Just a second, please. A group that's going to be going to Thomas College for the Thomas Cup, which is a competition in science, technology, engineering, and a chance to win a scholarship with money up to $10,000. So seeing these kind of events happen, I think, is great for our children. We've also had many discussions about, last night, we had a serious discussion about some of the bathroom use at our high school. We've had a lot of comments and conversations from students about the bathrooms not being readily available for students. We had two student representatives come to speak to us last night, and we're working towards a solution with them, as well as the administration, to make sure that everybody has the opportunity and the reasons why bathrooms may not be available and what's happening around that situation. We also had a discussion last night, as some of you may have seen in the paper this morning, about an update in efforts for teacher certification. The superintendent is looking outside the box to see if there's a possibility of looking at different ways that we can have teachers in our schools. There's a serious fact that, you know, at this point, we don't have enough teachers, we are, don't have enough teachers in the line to come in. If you look at Farmington, they're saying themselves that they don't have a lot of people that are going for the teacher certification. So this is something that needs to be looked at. It's being looked at on a state level, and he's looking at working on legislation with Senator Rotundo and others in the Department of Education to see what might be able to be done to get more teachers certified and in our classrooms, particularly for next fall. Oh, my goodness. Member Bowden would be very upset with me if I didn't remember to say this. So the Battle of the Bridges is coming up. Next week, it is the girls' basketball and boys' basketball from, with EL and Lewiston. There are currently only 500 tickets available for Lewiston residents to attend the game, and the tickets are currently available with the director of, Director Fuller for sports. And you can reach out to them to get tickets. The tickets are not that expensive, they're wristbands, but if we can get people to go to those two games, the games are 5 o'clock, the girls' basketball, 7 o'clock, the boys' basketball, and let's fill those seats and make sure that the blue is represented for those big games, because they are big games with these kids. It's in, it's in Auburn, yeah. And if I might, I just have one more thing to report on the Lewiston Youth Advisory Council.
Please continue.
Thank you. So the Youth Advisory Council is beginning their new initiative, and this is going to be, I had mentioned about it a couple of weeks ago, that they were starting a new initiative. They're going to call it Let Diversity Shine. This is tentatively scheduled for March 23rd. They're currently seeking residents to participate in the event. This is going to be to have people representing all the different cultures in our community, from our French-Canadian community to our Somali community to every community that is in the city, that lives here, a representation, a table, I hear the mayor even put in for a Hungarian table. I've heard that Margaret Craven has put in for a table that represents the Irish community. So I hope that many put forth, and they can do this. The kids are very excited about this new project. And that's it. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I think it's going to be a great project, and I'm half Hungarian. If there's any other Hungarians, I think there's one or two in Lewiston, please join me at this table. I'll be in touch. Thank you, Counselor Scott. Other reports and updates? Finance?
Yes.
Oh, yes, sorry. Counselor Clement?
Just by way of information, the Finance Committee has approved its recommendation to the council on the 2024 LCIP. As soon as signatures are on it, it'll be forthcoming. I would imagine it'll have a few next meeting to receive the recommendations. Stellar effort put forth by committee member Phoenix McLaughlin to author the report based on recommendations from the committee. He did a fine job, and I'm sure it'll be some interesting reading for colleagues on the council. I thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Clement. Counselor Harriman?
Thank you. Not a committee update, but I just wanted to acknowledge that February is Black History Month. Thanks.
Counselor LaChapelle?
Just to let the council know, tomorrow evening is Law PAC's, we have a meeting with the Law PAC tomorrow, where our new member will be joining us for the first time. So we're looking forward to that, and there'll be a new election of officers for the upcoming year in Law PAC.
A new election, or, didn't you just have an election?
We do it every year.
Right, okay. Time, time flies.
Mr. Mayor?
If there's no other council reports and update, we do have one from staff.
Yes, please continue.
Okay. So in your packet, because workshop nights are getting tight with budgets coming up, we put it under this format with the deadline that's coming up. The Nature Conservancy has a grant application that is available to us. We are looking at applying for a $50,000 one-year grant award. That's going to be split between the installation of, depending on the cost of the trees and the installation cost, of about 20 trees, and then we're looking at installing three different water fountains in our area parks. So what the memo and then the attached draft resolve will be, if the council's interested in pursuing this grant, the resolve will be at your next meeting to approve. This approval gets enclosed with the grant application, and then if we are awarded, we will be bringing it back to you with the accept and appropriate order that we normally do.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Administrator Hunter. Counselor LaChapelle?
After doing considerable amount of reading on this subject and talking to a few other counselors, I have no problem at all with the application. I have major problems with the resolve, and I don't like a lot of the wording in this at all, and I cannot vote in favor of this, with this resolve. The first page, I'm all in favor. This resolve goes into the weeds that I, who wrote this resolve to start off with?
It is part of the language that the grant application includes a draft language, so we've incorporated that. If there are specific elements you want to wordsmith, let me know, and we can change the, some of the wording for the actual order that, the resolve that is presented before you.
I'd like to change the entire resolve. It's, we're getting into the weeds. The, I disagree 100% with the whereas the state of Maine's four-year climate action plan, that whole thing. If we start talking about what relevance does the Gulf of Maine warming 99% faster the oceans around has to do with planting trees and putting in water fountains? They spoke in regards to, and I used, you know, the, used the comment from the first page. If we want to start adding things to the resolve, the first page in the administration down, according to simple study, having more tree covered neighborhood could account for as much as 13% change in students' outcomes. There's a whole list of things that I can list that would change the students' outcome. Also, the trees, we could put in the resolve, the trees, definitely it's going to help for greenhouse gas and the oxygen, we could also put in there because of the my, the stupid pollution that's coming out of China, hitting, hitting the, the currents, hitting the West Coast, coming across, dumping acid grains in the state, acid grain in the state of Maine, this helped filtrates it also. There's no need of having that in there, but we could put in there. I, I just, I have a problem with a lot of the wording in that resolve. I would like to see it reworded, and I have no problem with planting trees. Yes, definitely a very positive thing. Putting the water fountains, I have no issue at all. I agree 100%, just disagree with this resolve wholeheartedly.
Counsel?
Administrator, thank you, sorry. Thank you, Counselor LaChapelle. Administrator Hunter, is there, you know, we are requesting, we're applying for this grant, correct?
That's correct.
And so is there, are there specific elements that need to be in the resolve in order to qualify for the grant?
That's what we will go back and review and make sure all the elements are included in the resolve, but maybe offer it as a little bit wider scope in the, in what those elements include.
Yes, it is my, thank you. It's my take that, that we include what's required in order to get the grant without, I guess, having a, you know, a full-blown discussion about things that don't need to be in the resolve for, to get the grant.
Sounds good. So, but the general consensus is that the grant application, okay.
Yeah, I wholeheartedly want this grant.
Okay.
Yeah. Counselor Scott, did you have something?
Yes, I did. So I had some questions about the resolve as well, and my concern, and I took a little bit of time to read the Maine Climate Council's report, how this is aligned with Maine Won't Wait initiative from the governor and the community resilience planning, and one of my questions was, is the, is it necessary to approve this resolve and their words before we get the approval for the grant? $50,000, trees, water fountains, I mean, I'm a master gardener. I want all of the trees and the gardens and the community gardens and everything else we can get. That being said, I'm not particularly in favor of the full initiative of the Maine Won't Wait, when we talk about having to have 219,000 electric vehicles on the road by 2025, and I know personally, I could never afford an electric vehicle, and who is paying for those charging stations? And if we sign up for this and we have to approve this resolve, does that mean that the municipality has to approve the Maine Won't Wait initiative? And who's paying for the charging stations? Is that on the backs of the municipality? And as a city councilor, when I look at all of this, I want a $50,000 grant too, but I do not want to be put and beholden to something that not everybody in our community will agree with, and I don't necessarily fully agree with, and I'm a person that does cleanups and Earth Day and everything else. So this is something we need to look at a little closer before we do this, and I would recommend that every city councilor go into and look at the Maine Won't Wait initiative, the Maine Climate Council, which was established from that, and the community resilience planning, because according to what I could see this afternoon, there are already 123 communities that have signed up to agree to this, so I need to do a little bit more studying myself. Thank you.
Counselor Harriman?
Thanks. I read, I read this resolve as just sort of, you know, laying out some basic facts and not necessarily endorsing particular, the plans that are mentioned, but I agree that if we could take a look at what language is required for the grant, then, you know, we just put in what's required. That seems fine to me. Thanks.
Counselor Clement?
I will agree with Counselor LaChapelle, and in particular, Counselor Scott. I think there's a lot of verbiage in this resolve that need not be there. Every whereas clause, to me, reads because this is, therefore, we will, and I just can't agree with that in its present state. I have a couple of questions. What is the local cost attendant to this $50,000? Is there any cost local matching, or?
No, there's no in-kind services needed.
No in-kind services?
Yes.
Fountains would be usable six, eight months a year?
I guess, yes, they do winterize them. If, going back, there will be the nominal water usage of the fountains, if that's an in-kind service.
You put a meter on them and coin-operated meter, perhaps?
I can send you the information that, we can do that.
No, I just basically think, because I've read through this, a lot of things in here that I just can't agree with. I agree with the concept, but there's a lot of things that I think when you start accepting grants and you have to put forth some type of resolve or agreement, beware the strings that are attached. And I see that there's a potential for some pretty hefty strings in here. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. It, are we going to public comment for this?
It's a report. It's like, it's like a workshop.
Okay.
So I've got the information that I need, that we can put another draft together for the council agenda the next time.
Right, yeah, I think the pragmatic way forward is just to see what, what's required. Thank you, Administrator Hunter. Counselor Clement?
Mr. Mayor, this perhaps is not a report, maybe we're into other business, but the proclamation has been signed by six of the seven councilors here. It lacks the signature of Counselor Jelineus, who's excused. I would ask that once this is fully signed, the clerk attest a copy and give a copy to each member of the council.
Yeah, I, I think that's a great idea. Thank you, Counselor Clement. Thank you, Administrator Hunter. Any, any other new business? Madam Clerk, yeah, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.